At 7:30. January 19, 2023. Um, Jennifer, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Bernstein? Ms. Christian?
Here.
Ms. Glavinger? Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Yu?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Thank you. Um, does anybody have anything that they would like to, uh, pull off the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Jennifer, or I'm sorry. Everyone may have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Smooth.
Second.
Thank you. Jennifer, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Um, seeing that we have members of the public present, thank you so much for joining us. Um, are there any public comments today? Do we have anyone we have to check online or? Nope. Okay. Thank you.
Sure might have one.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, do you mind coming to the, because we have the video and then that way, if you'll stand right at the edge here, then we can make sure to capture and make sure everyone could hear on the live stream.
Take this chair or no?
Sure.
Sure, here, I can, uh, what do you mean, please?
Uh, Gerald Angelo. Uh, a lot, a lot of what the library does, I see as far as like promotion is definitely, um, a program based. So you see, you know, there's lots of things going on. There's, uh, the newsletters, what, 98% programs? There's TV screens out there that are programs. There's posters everywhere that are programs. Uh, one of the things I wanted to discuss was, um, the catalog in which way the, um, I like the buying of materials for the catalog, uh, how to engage better with patrons about what's in the catalog and also, I guess, promotion of those items, for lack of a better term. I know you're a public entity, you're not really promoting. And then, of course, um, weeding of it and like how to like, I guess, be more careful that you're not getting rid of something you may actually need to repurchase later. So if this is, well, so who am I? Basically, I have experience with, um, consulting experience with, uh, accessibility, user, um, engagement and just usability in general. So I've basically come to this as a person that's been used in the library for 10 or so years since I lived here. And as far as, uh, media materials, well, let me, I can start with buying. How long do I get? Do I get like 10 minutes?
Five.
Five? Okay. So I'll make this quick. Which is, the buying of materials seems to be kind of, um, not taken into consideration. Um, people are using streaming services more, so we kind of have more titles sitting on the shelves in bulk quantities, usually about eight, 10 weeks after purchase. So it's kind of like, do we need 10 copies of things anymore? Another one is how is this stuff promoted to people? There's little slips of paper upstairs, like here's what's new. And it's kind of like, it's, it's homework of what's new, like, okay, it's a, it's a listing that only says the title. And it's just like, it's on the patron to go and say, what is this? Let me search for it in the catalog. In the catalog, if you're looking for stuff that's been added new to the catalog, that's what, a rolling stock of 90 days or something? It'll tell you.
It depends on the volume.
Yeah. So I, I feel that a lot of people aren't, um, aware of things that are in the catalog and they're kind of falling off. So you, you either have to be at a library often and look at everything and see the turnover because patrons aren't here every day where staff are. And how to, uh, I guess, best manage that so like things aren't leaving before someone has a chance to, to see it. And as far as, I guess, the weeding goes on that, there are ways to, um, to compress the, uh, shelf space. Like if you were to, a, a prime example of this would be the James Bond movies. There's 25 James Bond movies. Do they need to take up this much space? Kind of thing. Um, the library already has binge boxes which put six movies in this, this much space. So the, uh, library could actually template something and condense the catalog so that you can carry more items. So less stuff leaves, more selection. You're not getting stuff from other libraries. You're not getting stuff from libraries near and far, which I assume is the expense of this library to get it mailed here or no? Okay. So it, it just matter like, hold on to the physical media as much as you can is basically the message I have, which is like, be smarter with how you buy it. Let people know how to find it easier and don't always just take it out of the ether. That's it. Is that five?
Uh, I think you had one more minute if you'd like, but.
That's it.
Okay, Gerald, you said right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
All right.
Um, is there anything you want to say?
No, I can follow up with you after.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to staff reports. Kate?
Sure. So, uh, a couple of things that I had in my report, uh, just to draw the board's attention to, um, we are again, um, we have again been awarded, uh, by, as a five-star library. Um, this is done every year by the Library Journal. Um, there are over 9,000 public libraries in the country and, uh, typically about 250, I think this year it was 263, libraries received that distinction. It's grouped by budget category. Um, and one of the things that I thought was really telling in with this year's star libraries is that this was the first year that we have some of the pandemic, um, data that came out with this because it's like a two-year delay. Um, and, and we saw that there was a huge increase in Illinois libraries getting, um, named as star libraries. So there was like 43 out of the, um, you know, 250-plus libraries, which I think speaks very clearly to the work that Illinois libraries did to pivot very quickly, um, in those early days of the pandemic to make sure that we were still working on finding different ways to meet patron needs. So, um, so this is, you know, a, I think a testament to the wonderful patrons we have, but also very much the hard work that all of the staff here put in to making sure we can still serve our public. And then.
Congratulations.
Well, and congratulations to the board and the community because it's, it's a group effort, right? I also wanted to just mention that we are hosting the State of the Village next week. Um, and so this is, uh, exciting where the chamber is switching it up and, uh, we're very happy to host, um, President Cisla. And so next Wednesday is the State of the Village at nine o'clock. And if you are interested, just let me know and we'll make sure to get you registered. It is being recorded, um, and will be shared and will be, along with the village and the chamber, we'll be sharing it on all of our social media as well. Um, so we're hoping that this will then become an annual thing and that it will, um, previously it was open to chamber members and so we're hoping to make it more accessible. Um, I know Kathy Quinn, the director, um, at the chamber is also very interested in making it more accessible to the full community. So we're excited to partner with them on that as well. And then I also wanted to just follow up on the patron that has been emailing the board with concerns about materials in the collection. Um, Kelly and I have both reached out to her and, um, and spoken with her. We are waiting to hear back on dates that she's available. Jennifer, um, has continued to follow up to try and see what dates. Um, so Kelly and I have made ourselves available at any time. And so we, I don't have any new information because we have not yet had a chance to meet with the patron and her husband, but we are looking to do that. We zoom. And that's all I have unless anyone has any questions on any items in my report.
Okay. Um, next up, board member reports. Um, do any of the board members have anything they would like to report on or share? Okay. Um, moving on to unfinished business. So our EDI organizational assessment review. So we, all of us should have received, or we did receive in the packet, um, the report from the BlackBerry Collection. Um, the EDI committee and the management team have also received copies of this report. Um, so, uh, as a follow-up to this report and looking at next steps, this is something that we should be incorporating in our, incorporating into our strategic plan. And so Kate and I have discussed that in 2023, we're going to be looking at creating a new strategic plan for the library. Makes a lot of sense to take the output of this report and use it as part of that strategic planning process. Um, and we can document what our next steps are in terms of EDI as part of this larger strategic plan that we want to work on in 2023. Um, do you have anything else you want to add?
Um, I will just add, because I don't think I put this, um, in my report, that, um, one of the, um, things in addition to the BlackBerry Collection, I had read in November, um, the Lilly Zhang's new book and, um, and reached out thinking there was no way that they would ever contact us or want to work with us. And, and they did express interest. Um, and so they take an outcomes-based approach and are really great at defining action steps we can take, which I think is very much part of what we want to do with the strategic plan and as next steps in our EDI work. So we've, um, I worked with, um, Michelle Mustowski, the co-chair of the EDI committee and had, and the EDI committee itself to look over, uh, to put together a proposal and we're waiting to hear back to see if Lilly will be interested in working with us, which would be amazing. Um, and so, so I think that that's another really positive avenue. Um, our goal with our EDI work was never to have only ever one consultant. Like in the past, we've had, uh, Inclusion Nation, we've worked with Biz Lindsay Ryan and now the BlackBerry Collection. So I think, um, having the chance to work with Lilly is just adding another tool into, um, our toolkit and another person that we can contact with resources so that we can have a wide breadth of people to pull from. So it's, um, it's pretty exciting. I'm very excited about the Lilly thing. I don't know if it will pan out, um, but certainly as part of the, um, strategic planning process that this, um, working with Lilly would give us some really clear action steps, um, using the work from BlackBerry Collection as well to look at what information was already gathered from staff. So I think that we have some really good avenues that we'll be able to explore and, and having a strategic plan that lays out more concretely what next steps we want to take would be really helpful.
Thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments on the report or the proposed next steps of looking at this as part of the strategic plan? So Kate, um, as a next up, will you start working on an RFQ for a consultant? And then we can begin that process. Um, new business. So next up is the FY24 Security Capital Project Presentation. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, the slide's up here. All right. So, um, some of you may remember seeing a security update project on our, um, levy request back this fall and probably several other falls in the past. Um, and that's because just before the pandemic, we identified the need to do a sweeping security upgrade, um, to update aging and outdated technology on our alarm system, our video surveillance, our facility access control system and our public address system. Um, and we put out an RFQ to hire a consultant to do this. And the reason we did is because there's a lot of, um, infrastructure that overlaps on all of those products in terms of IT and facility needs, as well as wanting these systems to play well together. And so what we're really hoping for by hiring a consultant is having somebody that can guide us through a process of updating all four of these systems in a way that will integrate really well into our current building, into our IT infrastructure and that the, all the systems will work together. So we did put out an RFQ back in November and we did not have any viable candidates to consult with. Um, and so at this point, we're kind of going back to the drawing board to do more work, um, to hire a consultant. Um, and so just a, a reminder of where we're at with our current environment, our security alarm system, um, was installed in the late 1990s. The system does allow for key card access on one entrance, um, which staff use to enter the building. Um, it also allows the ability to arm and disarm the alarm system with a security code and our doors have external sensors. Um, this system is so old, it's running off of a Windows 7 laptop. So, um, and. Yeah. The, um, the next system is our video surveillance system. Um, we have 17 video cameras in the library. Prior to the lobby remodel project, we had 12. Um, we, so we did add a few, um, with that project, mostly, um, the, in the self-check area. Um, our recorded footage is stored for a limited time. Our playback system is, uh, leaves a lot to be desired in terms of ability to access footage as well as to get, um, solid pictures from that footage. Um, we did receive a quote that recommended 72 cameras for the, a building of our size. Um, we have only interior cameras. We don't have any coverage on the exterior of the building, which comes up quite often when there are accidents in the parking lot. Which often.
Yeah.
As well.
And just to remind everyone, because I doubt you remember, but we're, we have 87,000 square feet for our building.
Um, and the next thing is a facility access control system. So this would be a FOB system to get in and out of doors that are generally locked because, um, there's staff use only. As I mentioned, we do have a swipe card for our staff entrance, but that's it. Otherwise, we have a series of keys that we use to get in and out of various places in the building. Um, managing the key system is cumbersome. Keeping track of keys for onboarding and offboarding is difficult. Um, also with a facility access control system, we would have a better way to find where people are in an emergency situation. We would never use it to track where staff are day to day doing their work, but if there were an emergency and we needed to locate the last place somebody swiped a door, um, we would have the ability to do that. We'd also be able to be more nuanced in our scheduling for access as well as, um, set some limitations on who can access which parts of the building. Um, and then the last thing is our public address system, which being in this room often after 9:00 PM, you don't hear the overhead announcements that are made at closing and that is true for many places within the building. Um, there are dead zones in our public address system. Um, we're not sure when the system was installed. It may have predated the 1999 edition. Um, it works with our phone system with Ring Central to make overhead announcements and it also plays through the phone. Um, so we really just want to improve the coverage on that one. So, um, I talked a little bit about this in our current environment, but where do we want to go? Um, based on input from the Northbrook Police, other libraries and local security system vendors, we'd really like to modernize our security systems as well as OSGRIT company. Um, we'd like to modernize our security systems to streamline workflows, um, like accessing the camera footage, have better coverage of, um, cameras, have an alarm system that works online, um, and allows us to remote into it. Um, and have a system that keeps up with, um, modern updates to technology as well. So, um, in order to modernize the security alarm system, we would want to update power supply and cabling hardware. We're looking at the possibility of doing an IGA to connect with the Northbrook Police in certain instances, not at all times. Have more, um, ability to collect data that, we wouldn't ever recommend keeping data on hand long-term. It would be, but it would be something that we could access more easily and more quickly should we need it. Um, and also looking at the possibility of panic buttons at the service desks. For videos surveillance, again, we just really need to increase coverage, um, especially on the exterior, but a lot of our interior, um, areas don't have a lot of coverage either. And then, um, improve the playback system for the cameras. Um, so again, the facility access control system, it would just be really great to have in case of an emergency. Um, we've had staff mention, um, the key system and we have a few doors that have a combination lock are, um, concerning if there were an active threat situation. Um, it's difficult to get in and out of locked doors. And then again, for the public address system, we'd like to increase coverage and, um, volume so we can hear it.
One of the things with the public address system that has proven very challenging many times is when we have a Code Adam drill where there's a missing child and we stop and lock down and look for the child. There are just chunks of the building where people don't even know that that's happening because they haven't heard the announcement, even though we repeat it. And so.
You sort of have to walk through the building, kind of calling out like, we're evacuating. So our next steps, um, is to attempt to hire a consultant. Again, we're going to go back to the drawing board on the RFQ, get some feedback from security vendors to ask why they didn't bid the project back in November. Um, if we can't find a consultant, um, we will take this project into smaller steps and, and work with local vendors to do smaller pieces at a time.
So Kelly, is it that you had no responses? You said no viable responses, right?
Yeah, so we had one quote and it was to do the project. So they weren't.
They weren't going to invite you on the best way to do things. Okay. And are those, are those vendors typically doing both of those activities? Like they would do the, they would tell you, okay, this is how you should implement it and then this is what it would cost?
They, right.
Okay.
Right. And they, but they, if they consult on the project, they can't bid the project.
Oh, okay. Okay. Is that a, is that a security thing?
State law.
Oh.
Yeah.
I can, I guess.
Yeah.
They can't self-perform the work is what the issue is.
Yeah. So like when we have Pepper managing our construction projects.
Right, right, right.
They can't be running them as well.
But your, your, your RFQ was for the consulting piece.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Because like we don't really.
Oh, I see. That's what we need, had the thing for the project.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are there companies that just consult or do they all just do both?
It seems like they all do both in this area, but we're going to reach out, um, to some architects and building planners to see if we can get some names through those mediums.
Is it because they want to maybe do the project?
Correct.
Oh, got it.
Right. So our one quote, which you can see reflected here, um, was from the RFQ process from Alert Protective Services and, um, they wanted to do the project. Uh, but that was, it was a good process to go through because we did get to see sort of some real-time numbers for what these projects will look like. Um, the facility plan numbers are the numbers that we put in for the levy for this year. Um, and now we have some, some better estimates of what we actually need.
Sorry, how long ago was the quote again?
Um, November.
Okay.
But that's just for the project and not the consulting and we're already double what we put into the plan?
Yes. And the facility plan, those numbers were from, um, 2018. Um, but we've aged them, but it was, it was based on pretty rough estimates without having a consultant come and actually say, this is all the IT stuff. So. We're hoping they would be a lot closer.
Also keep in mind, they said we need 72 cameras, but we might not need 72.
Right, right.
That's right. So.
That's like.
We can maybe adjust that a little bit as well.
Prices also potentially impacted by everything that happened during the pandemic?
Oh, sure.
All the prices going up significantly?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So 2018 to now is like.
Yeah, even aging, even aging the facility plan data.
Yes. Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, so then the next step is that you're going to revise your RFQ, go back out, look to get another control bid and then we'll get an update when that's completed.
Yep, okay. And so for the next, after the consultant, we would then work with them to determine what was needed, develop an RFP, which we would then send out and then, um, and then when the bids were received, the consultant reviews and we bring a recommendation to the board based on the lowest responsible bidder. So, and you'll have dates along the way, but those are also kind of the next steps after the consultants really even pre-designed phase because we need them to help us do the design phase.
Sure.
And Maura, I don't know, I know it's been a while, but like, I don't know if you know of any.
My information would be so dated, but I can ask around, um, to people who are doing. I'll reach out to, um.
Okay.
Someone at, um, White and a couple of other places.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, next up is our discussion on severe weather procedures. So, um, we had a storm. Um, is that back in December?
Yeah.
Forever ago.
Um. It's almost a month, so yeah.
And, oh, right before Christmas, right. So I'm not sure if everyone was aware of this, but the library was closed for three days due to Christmas holiday, correct?
Right, we were closed Saturday, Sunday for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day and then Monday for being closed the Sunday for.
Correct. So I'm not sure if everyone is aware that these two days of closure for the holiday storm were preceding three days of already planned closure for the holiday. So in essence, we had five, um, days of the library being closed, um, you know, in continuously. So, um, you know, we've had discussions here at the board about closing the library and concerns about closing the library for an extended period of time. So Jay and I spoke with Kate and we wanted to review the procedures and talk about, you know, how, how does everyone feel about what happened? You know, how long do we want to wait to close the library? I think the decision was made on Wednesday evening and I myself actually ran over here to grab some stuff before, um, because we had gotten that notice, uh, knowing that we were going to be closed for an extended period of time. The rest of the community, you know, we were closed and, and, um, there wasn't a lot of time for people to come and pick things up over that holiday. Um, I think it also didn't, we didn't get the snow that was predicted. That kind of seems to be happening a little bit more lately, um, that, I know we had probably the coldest predicted, which I did see as part of the procedures.
Definitely not the 16 inches.
Did not get the 16 inches of snow. Um, so we wanted to see like, how do we want to handle those kind of reports as well? Can we wait longer, see if things materialize or, you know, we certainly don't want to wait till the middle of the blizzard to close and have people be, you know, competing for getting home safely. Um, so let me, and we did, you did get a copy of the procedures in the packet, which I'm sure everyone has had a chance to look at. So I wanted to open it up for discussion and see if anyone had any comments or feedback on the procedure or, or what happened in December.
Um, I thought it was a little abrupt, but I think, I mean, I think the closing of the library made sense. I think other, um, I don't know what other libraries did, but I know there, other schools that were open during that week closed, um, things like that. It, personally, I thought, you know, maybe if, because I think the notice went out on, it was Wednesday night and then we were closed starting on Thursday. If we had stayed open, I think until like Thursday at noon, because that seemed to be like what a lot of the, when they were predicting things were going to kind of turn and the weather was going to get colder. I think staying open that morning would have been, uh, a better gesture. And I know some people would have come in only for half a day, but it, I.
Yeah, sorry.
It's what I would have, I guess, preferred to have seen.
Um, I do think that like a lot of the libraries around here did stay open till 12 or noon and I got in touch with a couple of them, like Deerfield, Glenview, Winnetka. I think Skokie was closed all day, um, but there were quite a few that were open, like as you said, until 12 or 1. And I think the, the, the challenge with those reports is they do keep changing the weather reports, but, um, I think, yeah, noon was, or noon or 1, I think was at some point when they predicted it to start, so.
Yeah, and they had on Wednesday night, they were predicting it to start by like 10. And so then it was like, well, what's the point of being open? And then it had been getting earlier and earlier throughout the week. And so it seemed like it was trending earlier. And then, of course, the opposite happened. It actually didn't even start anything really until like 3.
Right.
Um, so.
Thank you, Maura. Anybody else?
So sorry, I was out of town that week. So, and I do know because my friends that we're traveling with had some high schools, but the school were like, they canceled all the practices. The high school canceled.
Thursday and Friday?
I think Thursday. I didn't, I thought we were only.
No, we were closed Thursday and Friday.
But so we said that on Wednesday?
Yeah.
I thought it was just one day. I guess my take is that, like, the staff safety is like the number one, like, I, I trust Kate's judgment on those and if, if, I mean, I'm okay if we come up with some type of like metrics or like parameters to later on, like just to kind of guide things. But a lot of times, these are really unpredictable and like, the data point is really like, you can't really trust it at that point you made that decision. I guess the only thing, I think I might have mentioned this in a, like, different topic. I, I just wonder like, if it's possible, like talking about keeping the library open. I still, I like, this might be a wishful thinking, and I don't know if other libraries do it, like, keep it open, but like a skeleton kind of staff open, like people can pick stuff, circulation keep like half the staff, we don't have to have reference or children's services like, or maybe having someone kind of mandate phone or whatever, like have a reduced service and in the scenarios like we do want to open, but like it's overkill to have everyone here or like reduce the risk and only have people that's close by or comfortably coming into work. I don't know if there's a, that mo, that type of model is possible or it's hard to.
I mean, it's not something that any other libraries do. It's certainly something that we talk about here and have tried to like think, how could we do this? Do we ask everyone from Northbrook to stay? But then it's like you're saying, and then there might be people in Northbrook that still don't feel comfortable. And there might be people living further away that do, and then it's going to depend on what day it is and who it is. I mean, it's certainly something we could talk about again, because I do think that, you know, we all want to have service for the patrons as much as possible. I have not seen it done successfully anywhere, but that doesn't mean that it isn't. So I think it's always something good to talk about. Because everyone has different levels of comfort with, you know, being out in that, in bad weather.
And as a patron and like talking about library as a space, I would think like this is really about people being able to pick up their holds and now people can check out their own things and it's just like kids want to use the meeting room, study room, the computer. If we can just have like more like these self-service people, if we can just keep the building open for them to help themselves, almost like just keep the library as a space. I, I think if there is a possibility to, to create that model, I think that would be helpful.
Like first, like no programming during those times.
Exactly, yeah. Like if we have to cancel, then just cancel, but we keep it open as a place, like, yeah, self-service, self-checkout, yeah.
Which is a lot easier to do now with some of the changes we've made, right?
Yeah.
I think the closure made sense with the information that we had at the time. I know we changed our travel plans based on the forecast, so I wasn't surprised to see the closure. I was a little surprised that it came out so much later than the decision seemed to have been made. And I'm sure there were a million parts to that.
We were waiting on programs to see if they could stay virtual.
Sure.
Anyway.
Right. And I think that for me, kind of goes back to Abby, like rushing over here to get her hold. Or even to Jamie's point, could we have stayed open an hour later that night because the announcement came out later, like, we're going to extend hours tonight so you can come and get what you need. And it's just an unfortunate convergence of timelines with the holiday closure being right. Especially after we made the decision and we did not close on those days. The universe had other plans, so I think it was handled well. It just, and it, like I said, to me, it felt like the right decision based on the information we had at the time with when the storm was supposed to start and keeping staff safe who needed to get in their car presumably and drive somewhere.
Right.
I think, for me, I think I'm okay waiting longer to close because of the uncertainty of these. Like even if we had closed, I think it said by, did it say by five A M. you have to make an announcement?
Yeah, that's what the time we put in the procedure because in order, if we were staying open and there was going to be snow, in order for maintenance staff to be able to get in the, here by seven A M., we want to make the call so that they know, and if the weather's bad, they need more time to get here.
So five is essentially nine P M. then, is kind of what it boils down to a little bit. Like, if you have to make the decision by five A M., you might as well make it by nine P M., right? Sort of. Yes.
I think, I think it's, if you think it's going to pass you by, I suppose then you maybe wait, I don't know, but.
Yeah. I mean, usually on those nights, like nine or five, like I'm gonna be up all night checking it anyway. So like, it doesn't really matter whether it's nine or five at that point.
I, I think, and I know this is hard to, to predict, but I agree with what Maura was saying, like if we could have stayed open for a half day, I think I would have felt better about it personally. I think do we have to make the decision to close Thursday and Friday? You know, we maybe could be, even though we thought it was likely or possible that it would have been on Friday, like we have to make that, we don't, we don't necessarily have to make that decision at the same time. And then that gives us, but in this case, I don't know if the, because we didn't get the snow, obviously, right? But the cold on Friday might have still.
Yeah, I mean, that definitely fell as the, so we, we use the National Weather Service guidelines and, you know, if they're saying, stay home, don't go out, and don't drive, then that's kind of, and so they have specific criteria that it needs. So we follow those same criteria in determining when that happens because I, this is like my least favorite thing in the entire world to make decisions on. More than COVID. I would, I, I hate saying this, but like, I would rather have another pandemic than have to do weather closings. If it meant having no more weather, no weather discussion.
You're sort of making safety decisions for the staff. That's terrible.
Yeah, well, yeah, it absolutely is. And, and it's a million texts between directors, between the village and the park district and the schools. And so.
And give the libraries.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it's, and the data has gotten less reliable for sure, which I thought it was going to be better this year because there's more commercial air travel again, whereas the last two years that haven't been. So they provide a lot of the data that is used to inform these, which I didn't know until Kelly told me. So I, I do think that we certainly can chunk it and do it one day at a time.
Just, just in case, another one, because this isn't the, I remember a couple last year too, where it was supposed to be like, you know, winter apocalypse and it wasn't.
Yeah, yeah, last year they were even more off.
A lot. So if we just do, you know, the decision day by day, then we're not locking ourselves in. Because you can't walk back that decision once it's been made.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah, so that's, I think.
I think that's.
And then it was, it was kind of like the perfect storm and the fact that we had three days already, like that's pretty uncommon.
It's never happened.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, it's, I know we don't have to vote on this because it's a procedure and not a policy, but even with what we've discussed today, I'm not sure that we're necessarily recommending any changes to that procedure.
I think it means changing it though, so that we're deciding on a day by day basis.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Unless it's sort of, yes, I'm comfortable with that unless it's like everything is shutting down, you know, like.
Right. And unless it's like, we've just got three feet of snow. There's no way the roads will be cleared tomorrow. Like, there are times where it's like you can make the call maybe by noon of the day before because you know there's no way that, like, when was it? Three, four, or five? Whenever it was, we had like that super negative.
Oh, the polar vortex?
Yes.
Oh, and school was closed for.
Ever that was. I felt like we were closed.
Do, do they close multiple days in a row like that? Or is it depending on?
That was all pre-COVID, the last time we had like, I think, extended days like that. And I feel like they do, I think we did know that they were going to be closed for a couple of days, but again, it was sort of like. It is. And it was right, I do remember, I think it was before a weekend, so it was sort of like, but now I don't know if they would do that because they're going to send kids home with their iPads and maybe they're more likely. Yeah, the, the policy is that they won't really do snow days anymore. And I think that's.
That's a policy?
I think that's pretty the end.
I just had the, just happened to have the intergovernmental lunch. And, and so currently only two twenty-five is planning to do, to have snow days be remote learning days because it's just too hard to figure that out. At least that's what the other superintendent said yesterday.
Okay. Because the kids don't necessarily bring their devices home and stuff.
Right. And then it's like, how does the teacher, are they ready to switch to a virtual curriculum and? Yeah, especially for the little kids. I know it would be like for kindergartners. Yeah. And I know Janet works at Niles Main High School. Did I say the name right?
East Main, Hill District sixty-three.
Why do I never get that one right?
On weather closings, we pivot to remote learning.
Okay.
Always, and we're pre K through eight.
Okay.
That's a since COVID thing or that?
That is since COVID. I do remember the polar vortex and yes, we were closed for several days.
Yeah.
And we were sort of making those decisions because superintendent locates it just as much as you do.
Pretty sure that's a universal feeling amongst everyone.
On a rolling basis.
So day by day?
Day by day.
Yeah.
This particular time, we did close halfway through the day on a Thursday. We were already closed on Friday because that was the beginning of the week.
Okay, so it sounds like there is a little, there's some support for just making the decision more staggered and making it day by day. And I would say, we don't want to wait so long that Kate is up all night checking the weather.
Oh, I'm gonna be anyway. It doesn't matter.
If you've made the decision, then it doesn't matter. So, but, but we want to, I guess we have to take the weather reports and going forward, like with a
With like a salt lake?
Healthy amount of skepticism.
She's gotta, she's gotta have that chance to second guess the decision.
Correct, exactly.
We don't want to divide you up.
Exactly.
So I guess the only change that we're.
One of the things that with the security cameras, this seems like, like this is not the reason to get outdoor security cameras. But like, even though I'm only up, you know, a couple of miles north in Deerfield, it can be totally different.
You can tell I'm two blocks away.
I know, but wouldn't it be nice if I had a camera that I could log into remotely and just see what was going on here?
So we don't have to vote on this, but do we have to vote if we're asking for a change to our procedure?
No. I'm gonna just make the changes to the procedures.
To the, what did you call it? Scaled? I don't remember the word we use, intermittent?
Uh, day by day.
Yeah. When, when possible, thank God.
Yeah.
Going through my head too.
Yeah. All right.
That's really fun stuff.
Okay, moving on to the Senate. That's what I was gonna say. The Senate Committee is on local government efficiency law.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna let Kate give us the rundown on this one.
Okay, thanks, Abby. And so there was a new law put into place in June of twenty twenty-two that said by June tenth of twenty twenty-three, we, the board has to form a committee to settle, study local efficiencies and report back to the county. This committee is comprised of all members of the board, myself, as well as two members of the community. The goal of this is to look at our statutes, ordinances, rules, our intergovernmental agreements, our shared services, how we operate and other relationships between other units of local government as well as the state. The law has said that it is not being done to have, you know, units of local government consolidate or close, but like, that's always something that keeps coming up. As it should, there's over six thousand of them, so there's a lot. So we have to meet at least three times after being formed and we have to prepare a report to present to the Cook County Board by December of twenty twenty-four. We don't yet know what exactly this report needs to look like or any like detail beyond exactly what's in the statute. And so I'm more sharing this as just letting you know that this is something that we'll be working on. And so this will be putting together the committee, which is us plus two other people and, and then working on this. So hopefully we'll be getting more information from the state on what exactly is being looked for, but Julie Morrison, who's one of our state senators, was one of, was the sponsor for the bill. So worst case scenario, I'm gonna go and ask Julie, what exactly are they looking for? And, yeah, and then we have to do it once every ten years thereafter. So I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, I can tell you guys are all super excited.
So we don't need to do anything, but this is going to be on the agenda again to take action on forming the committee later this year?
Yeah, this spring, before June tenth.
How are you gonna find the people from the community?
I don't know.
Well, probably, I mean, I'm sure that if we put something out, we would get lots of people that would be interested in participating. It's really, honestly, it's up to the board. You guys get to choose who, so whether we want to do like an application process, or we just ask for volunteers, or there's people that, you know, board selects, it's totally up to the board. And, and they did say you can have more people, but I mean.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Closed session, we do not need a close, we do not have a closed session on this meeting. So moving on to agenda, agenda building. So at next month's meeting, we have the following on the agenda. First draft of F Y twenty-four budget, review of our fine financial policies, the Powhatan Library visit on March first, a filed detailed statement of all, or filed the detailed statement of all receipts and expenditures for the previous six months. Summer will be coming to talk about intellectual freedom and book challenges and a strategic plan update. Does anybody want to add anything?
You ready for the gavel again?
Okay, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight six, eight seventeen.